Is your local business or organization looking to give back to the community? Help keep our roads clean by joining the Adopt a Road program administered by Keep Tampa Bay Beautiful. Keeping our roads clean is a great way for team building as well as exposure for your business. Select the road your business wants to adopt and dispatch a team to remove litter and debris. Participants will receive two signs showing their organization's name as well as safety equipment and instructions for cleaning roads. You can help keep Tampa Bay beautiful by adopting your own road today. To learn more, visit hcfl.gov/cleanhc.
These are the jobs you may not see every day, but just know we're working hard to make Hillsborough County a better place to live, work, and play. Subscribe to our YouTube page for more great county-related videos only on HTV.
Tampa Bay is like no place else. Wait, you can't recycle the bag. You have to throw it away. Proper recycling keeps it that way for everyone. Bags tanglin machinery and can bring sorting efforts to a halt. No bags. Trash the bags and keep our recycling program moving forward. No mommy, no plastic bags. Do your part to keep our recycling bag-free. Trash the tanglers or return them to participating retailers. For more information, visit tampa bay recycles.org.
Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of text and map amendments to the Comprehensive Plan this evening. Before we get started, I want to read into the record from Commissioner Gwen Myers. Please ensure information regarding my absence is read into the record. Due to another commitment, I will not be available to attend Thursday's public hearing. And then also from Commissioner Cameron Sopeda, she apologizes, but there was a death in her family and she's attending a funeral service, so she will not be able to attend this evening's hearing. We have received a request for continuances from applicants for four applications pursuant to Rule 15 of the Board Rules of Order, which allows for an applicant to request a continuance as of right in the event that two or more board members are not present. So at this time, I will request that a motion be made to continue the following applications to the February 13, 2025 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing at 6:00 PM. It's HCCPA 2407, HCCPA 23-19, HCCPA 24-28, and RZPD 24-0707. If I can have a motion to continue those.
So moved.
Second, motion by Commissioner Cohen. Second, Commissioner Bowles. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, thank you. This time I'll ask the Planning Commission staff to introduce the first item.
Yes, sir. Thank you. For the record, Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. For items A3 and A4, we have Ms. Alexis Myers presenting those items. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2409 located at South Road and County Road 579 for the urban service area expansion. This is a privately initiated text amendment that is, or I'm sorry, to expand the urban service area boundary on 638.77 acres. It is associated with map amendment HCCPA 2408, which I represent right after. This is the aerial of the site. The subject site is outlined in yellow. The blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. The site is located west of County Road 579 and north of South Road. Current adopted policy direction in the future land use element is to direct new growth into the urban service area. At least 80% of the population growth will occur in the horizon of the plan. Development in the urban service area typically four dwelling units per gross acre or higher and has urban infrastructure such as water and sewer. The Comprehensive Plan update identified the need to expand the urban service area to accommodate for future population growth. The site is within the Wyomama Village Residential 2 future land use category, which allows two dwelling units per gross acre, which is higher than typical rural densities. Development in the Wyomama Village Residential 2 future land use category must meet certain requirements such as connecting to water and sewer and community benefits. As far as impacts, the amendment would bring 575 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connecting to public water and sewer. Planning Commission staff received no objections to this amendment. We did receive comments from the following agencies: the Environmental Protection Commission, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Community and Infrastructure Planning, and the Water Resources Department. Next is the consistency review. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies in the future land use element and livable communities element of the Comprehensive Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And I'll be presenting the accompanying map amendment HCCPA 2408, which is located at South Road and County Road 579. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 638.77 acres. Currently, the future land use designation is Wyomama Village Residential 2, and the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to Residential 4. Here's the general location map. This amendment is in the rural service area. The amendment is within the limits of the Wyomama Village and South Shore area-wide systems community plans. It is located west of South Road, I'm sorry, County Road 579 and north of South Road. Here is the aerial of the site. The site is outlined in peak, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. The site currently has agricultural and single-family uses. The site also has wetlands, significant wildlife, and is in the FEMA flood zone AE. There are agricultural uses to the east, west, and south, and single-family uses are to the southwest. Here are some photos of the subject site. This is looking towards the subject site from South Road. This is looking west of the subject site from South Road. This is looking east from County Road 579. Residential developments are to the west. And this is looking southwest of the subject site from South Road. The applicant, I'm sorry, currently the future land use designation of the site is Wyomama Village Residential 2. Other future land use designations shown in this map include natural preservation to the east and south, and Residential 4 and Residential 6, which are just within the urban service area to the north. The applicant again is proposing to change the future land use designation to Residential Next are the impacts. Overall, the proposed amendment will result in the increase in density and introduce suburban-scale commercial and residential uses to a predominantly agricultural area while also eliminating community benefits. Next are the agency comments. The proposed amendment received no objections from the Environmental Protection Commission, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Community and Infrastructure Planning, and the Water Resources Department. Next is the consistency review. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies in the future land use element of the Comprehensive Plan. It is also consistent with these policies and also meets the intent of the South Shore and Wyomama Community Plan. Also, I'm going to go back to this other side. On-pack impacts are the responsibility of proposed development. Off-site impacts are the responsibility of the county and flooded through mobility fees, general revenue, and et cetera. In addition, each development is, I'm sorry, each development will be required to pay impact fees and mobility fees to address off-site impacts. The Florida Department of Commerce reviewed the amendment and had a technical comment regarding supporting the amendment with data analysis related to public facilities such as water supply, portable water, and sanitary sewer. That may result from the amendment. The Planning Commission have addressed the amendment application includes data analysis provided by the applicant, reviewed by the county. The county, through the agency review comments, did not find a deficiency in relation to public utilities, but does address the concern through the possible need of off-site improvements to support the development. Concurrently, and impact fees for water and sewer to address individual project demands and plans and facilities need to meet projected demand coordinated through the 10-year water supply plan, which was last updated in January of 2022. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and this concludes my presentation for 2408.
Thank you. Will the applicant come forward? Good evening.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward and Henderson, representing the applicant. Typically, at an adoption hearing, I wouldn't run through another PowerPoint slide from the transmittal hearing, but since we do have a new commissioner and we do have some members of the public that weren't here last time, I do want to throw up, put some graphics up for you. The subject site is in the star. May not be able to see that very well, but it is already zoned for 1,277 units. To the west, we have 1,047 units. Those weren't reflected in the quote-unquote agricultural development pattern that the Planning Commission referenced. That all of the area in purple is suburban residential development. And the Planning, Comprehensive Plan was just updated to acknowledge that over the plan horizon, the next 10 years, the urban service boundary is going to have to expand. These are right at the edge of the urban service boundary. They are already approved for development. They, at two units the acre, actually just, just under three units the acre, given the site layout and the transfer of density that occurred with this particular site and with the site to the west. And so they, in our opinion, are an appropriate place to expand the urban service area, and in fact, the most logical place. This is the surrounding roadway network, and the dashed blue dots are developer improvements that must be made. These are the surrounding utilities in the area. This is a schedule of impact fees that must be paid by this development overall if the maximum number of units were approved. And so there's a significant amount of money that comes along with these projects that will help offset some of the concerns that the public has. And so with that, we respectfully request that you adopt the amendments this evening, and also we're here to answer any questions should you have.
All right, thank you. I don't see anyone has signed up, but this is a public hearing. Does anyone want to speak to CPA 2409 or 2408? Please come forward. Good evening.
Okay. My name is John Regan. I'm a resident of Wyomama and a member of the Wyomama Community Plan Advisory Council or the Wyomama CPAC. The Wyomama CPAC members are all unpaid volunteers and residents of Wyomama. We conduct meetings with Wyomama residents to inform them of development applications in the pipeline as well as the current status of Bethune Park revitalization and collect community inputs on these desires. We announce our meetings through multiple Wyomama organizations and Wyomama HOAs. Our most recent meeting was at the Wyomama Civic Center, and we had 100 attendees this past Monday. Then on Tuesday, we had a Zoom meeting with the Wyomama HOA Tuscana residents. Bottom line is, we're not against new development, but desired controlled development. We are asking the county commissioners two things. One, pause voting on the four Wyomama applications, which are agenda items A1 through A8, until a comprehensive infrastructure study is performed and mitigation strategies identified. And two, move the WVR2 community benefits to RES4 within Wyomama, but rename it WVR-4 so that we maintain our benefits. Our Wyomama community does not wish to lose our ability to come to the table and negotiate community benefits with the developers. I want to note that the Wyomama CPAC previously negotiated significant community benefits with the Eisenhower Group on an 1,800-home development along Wyomama County Road 579, then testified in support of this development to the B OCC. Again, we're not against new development, but instead, we're against uncontrolled development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak to CPA 2409 or 2408?
My name is Augie Grace. I'm a resident of Wyomama and a member of the Wyomama Community Plan Advisory Council. In November, I testified in opposition to the eight amendments, and they were approved six to one. So tonight, I hope to take a little different approach. We are not against growth. We can support planned, planned growth with infrastructure in place. Tonight, I'm asking you to perhaps make a tough decision, a hard decision, but what I believe is the right decision. Instead of the urban service area expansion being contentious with every community, let's make the urban service area process a partnership. Let's use Wyomama as a model for other communities. Yes, we asked to pause growth, and during a period of time, we want and expect some action. So we're asking that these applications be tabled for now, and instead, that we look at the infrastructure in place before we go forward with these applications. We ask that we look at the flooding. Let's bring together the Hillsborough and Manatee County officials to gather the study of the flooding issues and possibly make plans to mitigate flooding and include Southwest Florida Water Management District and FEMA. Traffic, let's bring FDOT to the table and look at what can be done to mitigate traffic concerns. Let's have an open and honest discussion about impact fees and how we can ensure that they stay in Wyomama. Schools, instead of telling the developers to have follow-up conversations with the school department and then paying into a school construction fund, let's sit down with the school department and see what can be done and what can be done now and soon. Isn't this what we owe the parents of the students who are in the schools that are already over capacity? Community benefits. Change in land use from WVR2 to RES4. There is no requirement for developers to negotiate community benefits. In fact, there are no community benefits in any of the four applications. I'd like to see the B OCC tell the developers to go back and negotiate community benefits. Just to remind you of some of the serious flooding that occurred in the area of these applications. Commissioner Wasso at the November public hearing told us that an updated watershed study was to be completed in the summer of 2025. Shouldn't we have that information before analyzing or authorizing more building? Yesterday, John Regan, who just spoke, and myself met with former Commissioner and now State Representative Owens to discuss how the state can possibly help us with planned growth. He told--
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments. Anyone else? All right, is there anyone virtual that's on the line?
There is not anyone virtually. There is not anyone virtually, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, we don't have any other speakers, so can we have a motion for CPA 2409 or Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you very much. My remarks are going to be the same for all of these. Mr. Gormley, I mentioned this during the previous land use meeting, and I'm of the belief that any and all impact and mobility fees that are assessed for an expansion of the urban service area should be mandated under policy to be required to be spent within that area that they're expanding since it's new infrastructure to the community. Does that need to be accomplished tonight, or does that need to be accomplished at a later date?
Commissioner, assuming these amendments are approved, the next step with this would be a rezoning to implement the increased future land use. That would be an appropriate time to identify desires on spending of mobility fees proximate or impact fees proximate to the project. It would also provide the opportunity to have a discussion about potential developer use of those impact fees through developer projects. I would suggest that the rezoning stage would give a good opportunity for that, and no additional development could occur even if these items were approved until such time as the sites were rezoned.
Okay, perfect. And then later on, we could possibly achieve that as a standard operating procedure that if we expand the urban service area, by default, we don't have to go through it at every rezoning. It's just our rule of thumb--
Certainly.
--if the commissioners choose. And I did want to double check since, just because it was brought up again, on all of these assessed impact fees, stormwater management is included in those. Is that correct?
The stormwater management is a requirement of the development itself. The development will be required to permit a stormwater system to retain and attenuate the stormwater, both by the county and by the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and that will be a requirement of each of these projects, and they will not be able to develop without an approved stormwater management system that meets the requirements of the county's Stormwater Technical Manual.
Okay, so I will be able to at least ask my colleagues to try and designate all impact fees for urban service area expansions to be designated within the area that it's expanding to make sure that all the mobility funds, parks, et cetera, stay to that community's benefit. Thank you. Stormwater management fees were already considered throughout this process. I know that we already went through previous, to me getting here, there was a study from a revenue specialist to determine updated impact and mobility fees for developers, and we are currently charging all developers 100% of the suggested amount. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, based on--
And we, and we now have a policy that the county administrator will go in every few years and reassess to determine and make sure that going forward, we continue to assess the appropriate amount of mobility fees.
Yes, we have a four-year requirement in our ordinances to update those studies and base the fees on the updated study.
Good. I believe that the appropriate measures are in place to protect the communities of which we're expanding and making sure that all of the funds go to designate to those areas, so I will move for approval.
I have a motion. My Commissioner Wostel for CPA 2409. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Commissioner Cohen.
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Wostel, and I just want to add to it. We received a lot of emails that basically underscored and emphasized the need for infrastructure in South County. And I want to point out, because I don't know how much really coverage there ever is of this, that Tampa Bay Water is spending somewhere between $700 and $800 million to build a new pipeline to supply water to the South County region. The bonds have been issued for that, and they are being backed by the rate payers in Pasco Pinellas in Hillsborough County. We just passed in Hillsborough County a community investment tax that gives 5% off the top to the public schools. The list of schools that I saw that are being built with that money, about 75% of them are in the South County area. And then of the nine fire stations that are programmed to be built, I believe six or seven of them are in South County to serve infrastructure for this area, not to mention the new wastewater treatment plant that we are building down there. So we are investing in infrastructure. The new, the new list of repavings that are taking place are very heavy on projects in that area, rightfully so, because that area has definitely been in need. But, you know, the resources are being programmed, and when you put the resources toward the infrastructure, that is, that's our responsibility, and we're doing it. And I think Commissioner Wostel made a great point regarding the targeting of the impact fees, and these impact fees, again, are updated. Finally, from many, many years of undercharging, we are now charging what the professional consultants have told us to charge, and that means that the money is going to be able to be used for infrastructure. So I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Wostel?
Just to add on to what he said, since there's a lot of interested parties, the website for everything he just said is southhillsboroughpipeline.com, and there is a community meeting in Wyomama on Thursday, the January 16th, at 6:30 PM at the Baum Park and Community Center. Well, they will walk you through all of the serious investments that Commissioner Cohen just discussed with you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
If we can have a motion for CPA 24-08?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Wostel.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item?
Yes, sir. The next two items, A5 and A6, will also be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission--
we're expanding and making sure that all of the funds go to designate to those areas, so I will move for approval.
I have your motion. My Commissioner Wostel for CPA 2409, do a second.
I'll second.
Second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen?
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Wostel, and I just want to add to it. We received a lot of emails that basically underscored and emphasized the need for infrastructure in South County. And I want to point out, because I don't know how much really coverage there ever is of this, that Tampa Bay Water is spending somewhere between $700 and $800 million to build a new pipeline to supply water to the South County region. The bonds have been issued for that, and they are being backed by the rate payers in Pasco Pinellas in Hillsborough County. We just passed in Hillsborough County, a community investment tax that gives 5% off the top to the public schools. The list of schools that I saw that are being built with that money, about 75% of them are in the South County area. And then of the nine fire stations that are programmed to be built, I believe six or seven of them are in South County to serve infrastructure for this area, not to mention the new wastewater treatment plant that we are building down there. So we are investing in infrastructure. The new list of repavings that are taking place are very heavy on projects in that area, rightfully so, because that area has definitely been in need. But, you know, the resources are being programmed, and when you put the resources toward the infrastructure, that is, that's our responsibility, and we're doing it. And I think Commissioner Wostel made a great point regarding the targeting of the impact fees, and these impact fees, again, are updated. Finally, from many, many years of undercharging, we are now charging what the professional consultants have told us to charge, and that means that the money is going to be able to be used for infrastructure. So I'm going to support the motion.
Commissioner Wostel?
Just to add on to what he said, since there's a lot of interested parties, the website for everything he just said is southhillsboroughpipeline.com, and there is a community meeting in Wyoma on Thursday, January 16th at 6:30 PM at the Baum Park and Community Center. Well, they will walk you through all of the serious investments that Commissioner Cohen just discussed with you.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
If we can have a motion for CPA 24-08?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Wostel.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item?
Yes, sir. The next two items, A5 and A6, will also be presented by Ms. Alexis Myers. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Alexis Myers, Planning Commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2413, located at North Bishop Road and County Road 579 for the urban service area extension. This is a privately initiated text amendment to expand the urban service area boundary by 505 acres. It is associated with the map amendment HCCPA 2412, which I will present right after. This is the area of the site for the text amendment. The subject site is outlined in yellow, and the blue line indicates the existing urban service area boundary. The site is located east of Bishop Road, north of County Road 579, and south of State Road 674. Current adopted policy direction in the future land use element is to direct new growth into the urban service area. At least 80% of the population growth will occur in the horizon of the plan. Development in the urban service area is typically four dwelling units per gross acre or higher and has urban infrastructure, such as water and sewer. The comprehensive plan update identified the need to expand the urban service area to accommodate future population growth. The site is within the Wyoma Village Residential Two and the Residential Plan Two Future Land Use categories, which allows two dwelling units per gross acre, which is higher than typical rural densities. Development in the Wyoma Village Residential Two Future Land Use category must meet certain requirements, such as connecting to water and sewer and community benefits. As far as impacts, this amendment would bring 575 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connecting to public water and sewer. Planning Commission staff received no objections from this amendment. We did receive comments from the following agencies, the Environmental Protection Commission, the Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Community and Infrastructure Planning, and the Water Resources Department. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Now, I'll be presenting the accompanying map amendment, HCCPA 2412. This is a privately initiated map amendment that is large in scale and approximately 505 acres. Currently, the future land use designation is Wyoma Village Residential Two and Natural Preservation, and the applicant is requesting to change the future land use designation to Residential Four. Here's a general location map. This amendment is within the rural service area. This amendment is also in the limits of the Wyoma Village and residential, I'm sorry, Wyoma Village and South Shore area-wide systems, community plans. It is located east of Bishop Road, north of County Road 579, and south of State Road 674. Here's the area of the site. The site is outlined in pink, and the blue line indicates the urban service area boundary. There is agricultural on the site as well as to the south. The site also has wetlands, significant wildlife, and is in the FEMA flood zone AE. There are also single-family uses to the west. Now are some photos of the site. This is looking northeast towards the subject site. Bishop Road is out of frame to the left. This is looking north towards the subject site from Bishop Road. Here we have looking south of the subject site. And this is looking towards the subject site from Bishop Road. Currently, the future land use designation of the site is Wyoma Village Residential Two and Natural Preservation. Other future land use designations shown in this map include Residential Four and Residential Six, which are just within the urban service area. The applicant again is proposing to change the future land use designation to Residential Four. Next are the impacts. Overall, the proposed amendment will result in the increase in density and introduce suburban scale, commercial, and residential uses to a predominantly agricultural area while also eliminating community benefits. Next are the agency comments. The proposed amendment received no objections from the Environmental Protection Commission, Conservation and Environmental Lands Management, Community and Infrastructure Planning, and the Water Resources Department. The next two slides are in regards to the consistency review. The proposed request is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan. The proposed request is also consistent with the South Shore area-wide systems and Wyoma Village Residential, I'm sorry, Wyoma Village community plans. On-site impacts are the responsibility of the proposed development. Off-site impacts are the responsibilities of the county and funded through mobility fees, general revenue, et cetera. In addition, each development will be required to pay impact fees and mobility fees to address off-site impacts. The Florida Department of Commerce reviewed this amendment and had a technical comment regarding supporting the amendment with data and analysis related to the public facilities, such as water supply, potable water, and sanitary sewer that may result from the amendment. The Planning Commission have addressed that the amendment application includes data and analysis provided by the applicant reviewed by the county. The county, through the agency review comments, did not find a deficiency in relation to public utilities, but does address the concern through the possible need of off-site improvement to support the development. Concurrent and impact fees for water and sewer to address individual project demands, and plans and facilities need to meet a projected demand coordinated through the 10-year water supply plan, which was last updated in January of 2022. Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and this concludes my presentation for 2412.
All right, thank you. How about you come forward?
Yes, good evening. Kami Corbett again with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson. I'm going to show the impact fees for this site. And also just take the opportunity to make a couple of comments on some of the things that were set in public comment. This is a long-range plan that you're approving. This doesn't happen overnight. There is still rezoning. There's still construction plan approval. The housing market could slow. Valencia Lakes itself was approved originally in 1989, and it's only now just building out. This is the long-range plan, and this is something that the state obligates you to do. And a moratorium doesn't stop people from moving here. What happened during the last moratorium, there was a great housing boom, and Manatee County developed up to the line. They come through the county, they don't pay any mobility fees, they don't pay any impact fees, and they don't pay abhorrent real estate taxes. So really, this is, this board fulfilling its responsibility to plan for growth in this county and ensure that revenue stays here. And again, we'd respectfully request your approval.
All right, thank you. Now, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to CPA 2413 or 2412?
The impacts on Saffold development are significant. There are 638 acres, which can result up to 2,555 new homes. No identified elementary schools in the county's five-year plan for up to 3,424 potential additional children, based on the county's planning factor of 1.34 children per household. There is a high school plan for 2025 through 26, a middle school for 27 through 28, but we don't see any elementary schools listed in the county plan. This development can result in additional 5,110 cars onto currently overcrowded Wyoma roads. Myself and the Wyoma CPAC wish to have the county commissioners pause the service area extension applications until a comprehensive infrastructure study and mitigation strategy are put into place. Roads are already congested, schools are already overcapacity, which are going to get worse with these four applications. Three of the application, including this one, is in a known flooding area with no mitigation identified. Note on traffic is, impact on traffic on roads is accomplished for each individual application only and not an accumulation of applications. Traffic evaluation should look at the impact of three to five-mile radius of the application. The Wyoma CPAC would like to have one or two members join the county traffic study and any county flood study task force that's put into place. The Wyoma CPAC is asking that all four Wyoma development applications be rezoned from WVR two to WVR four, not RES four. RES four would eliminate Wyoma community benefits. These are very important to the community. Request county commissioners additionally require the developers to conduct community meetings, especially with the Wyoma Community Plan Advisory Council. Please vote to pause this application at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. And can you state your name for the record? Can you state your name for the record?
I'm John Regan, resident of Wyoma, 5051 Sandy Brook Circle.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. In the November transmittal hearing, we kept talking about the tremendous impact of the 8,400 new homes being approved in Wyoma. Tonight, I want to, want you to consider all the new construction that is being done, even today, in Wyoma. And I will show you some pictures and maybe some videos of what is currently being done. There is currently a massive amount of new homes being built in Wyoma. 8,400 new homes without proper planning and infrastructure improvements will just further damage Wyoma. So this is the Bishop Road, and this is the back entrance of South Shore Falls, which is also known as the Lagoon because of the lagoon water park that's placed there. Eventually, South Shore Falls is going to have 2,800 homes that are built there. But if you look at the bottom picture, there's already site preparation for homes that are being constructed at South Shore Falls on Bishop Road. This is Saffold Road and Berry Bay. Berry Bay is already a large development in Wyoma, but it's being done in phases. And if you drove through the corner of Berry Bay and Saffold Road now, you would see these new homes that are going up. This is Saffold Road and 301. This is the end of Saffold Road that had extensive flooding. If you go, if you look at the homes right across the street from this area, these, a lot of these people had extensive flooding, and some of the homes are actually condemned because of the flooding. Again, this is to show you the amount of construction that's going on in Wyoma. This is Bishop Road and County Road 579. We just looked at County Road 579. This is the new development that's going up. I have videos of this, and I can show you how large of a development this is. We are not against all development, and in fact, and Mr. Regan mentioned this, the last proposal that came up in 2023 was for 1,800 homes. And the developer met with our group, we had negotiations, they offered community benefits. The community, as a result of that, received a public park, received land for public schools, affordable housing, multi-use trails, and childcare facilities. But the changes that are being made now, we don't have the ability to sit down with the developers, and we don't have the ability to go back to the community and say, with all the development that's coming, we can offer at least these benefits to you. And as Mr. Regan mentioned, we think these need to be added.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, can you please state your name again for the record for this case?
I'm sorry, Augie Grace, 15821 Cobble Mill Drive, Wyoma.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ted Canty, 15480, Santa Paula Drive, Wyoma. I'm also a member of the Wyoma CPAC and a committee member in my HOA. The information that I wanted to discuss was the schools. We've heard that there are schools in the five-year plan, and yet, when we met with the superintendent going over the new high school and so forth, I believe it was the middle of the summer, we were told, the residents were told, that the new high school will be full day one because it'd be bringing back students from other areas because there's not enough schools in Wyoma. My concern very shortly here is I don't see where new schools would be, and I'm not sure, you know, what would the, what would the land allocation be for those schools and what impact that'll be eventually on taxes if impact fees are already spent and burnt out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak to the item? Okay, Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you. I was just double-checking. It's a unique thing about the school board is they are the only entity that is completely isolated from the Board of County Commissioners. We have no touch points. They're the only government body that I know of that is completely isolated. We have absolutely zero authority over what the school districts do, but so we can't, we can't force them to coincide with our plans. However, we do have some school concurrency measures that I was just confirming, and also a task force of sorts, of sorts that's working directly with them to better inform them and keep them aligned of the growth projections. And as you saw, the numbers laid on the screen, we do have impact fees for those schools that go into their own bank account, escrow, whatever, and the school districts then come. The only real thing that we do is collect that money, and then they request that money for those new schools, and I know that that's being accomplished. Mr. Gormly, can you confirm that to the public?
Yes, confirmed. We do collect the school impact fees and distribute them to the school district at their request for new schools. We do also have a new partnership with the school district relating to school siting that's designed to have a long-term planning to project growth that's coming and help the schools identify locations where schools will be needed and have infrastructure program to support those schools.
Okay, yeah, and I mean, I know it's an imperfect system, and the same comments on the previous item is me notifying the applicant publicly that I intend to make a request from my colleagues to require any and all impact fees collected from this expansion of the urban service area, if approved, to be required to be spent within this same expansion area to ensure that the local community receives the maximum benefit of mobility improvement. So I will move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion for CPA 2413 by Commissioner Wostel, do a second.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote, CPA 2413.
Motion carried five to zero.
Can we have a motion for CPA 2412?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Wostel.
Second.
Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote.
Commissioner Wostel, thank you. Motion carried five to zero.
All right, next item?
Yes, sir. The next two items, A7 and A8, will be presented by Ms. Andrea Papendrew and Mr. Jake Collins. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 24-11, 15540, West Lake Drive, Urban Service Area Extension. This is a privately initiated text amendment to expand the urban service area boundary for 541.81 acres, and there is an accompanying map amendment, HCCPA 2410, which you'll see in the next presentation. This is an aerial of the subject site. The site is in the pink outline. The existing urban service area line is the blue line. Site is east of West Lake Drive and south of County Road 672. So you've already seen this slide in a couple of the other presentations, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. The current adopted policy direction is to direct new growth in the urban service area. Development in the urban service area is typically four dwelling units per acre, per gross acre or higher, and has urban infrastructure, such as water and sewer. And the site is within the Wyoma Village Residential Two and Residential Plan Two categories, which allows consideration of two dwelling units per gross acre, which is higher than typical rural densities. So the amendment would bring 541.81 acres into the urban service area, requiring at a minimum connection to public water and sewer. Proposed amendment received no objections from county staff. Comments include the following agencies that are on the screen. The proposed amendment is consistent with the following objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan, including objective two and policies and its policies on the- 2 and its policies on the timing of growth, and the Wyomama Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. Planning Commission recommends the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And now I'll turn it over to Jake Collins.
Thank you, Andrea. Jake Collins with Planning Commission staff. Again, this is a privately-initiated amendment. It is a regular map amendment. You'll notice the acreage is a few more than what you have on the USA expansion. There's a little bit of land that's actually in the urban service boundary with this one. It's currently Wyomama Village Residential 2, and there is a sliver of Residential Plan 2, and the applicant is requesting Residential 4. Where are we? Again, we're in South County. We are in the northernmost of all of these Wyomama amendments. Again, we are in the Wyomama Community Plan, and we're in the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. Same thing, you just saw an aerial. Here's that aerial again. The subject site is outlined in pink. It is a farm current or was a farm. Basically, what we have, a little bit to the south of this area, you do have another subdivision in Wyomama Village Residential 2. You have Valencia Lakes directly to the west of the subject site. And you'll see, again, within the urban service boundary, some of the prevailing development type for the suburban development there. We'll also talk a little bit about what you have directly to the east, which is Baum Scrub, and some of the ELAP lands the county has. This is the subject site. We're looking north. This is looking west from the subject site, a single-family residential. This is Valencia Lakes. We're standing in the middle of West Lake Drive, and we're looking to the north of the subject site. And this is we're on the subject site, looking to the east, which is towards the Baum Scrub. So this is the current future land use map that you have out in that area. Again, that blue-gray is the Wyomama Village Residential 2. You'll see directly to the east, that green color, that is natural preservation. That's the Baum Scrub. That's what is owned by Hillsborough County. And then you see Residential Plan 2, which is the light yellow that you'll see to the north into the northeast of the subject site. The blue line running north-south right there is the urban service boundary, and you'll see the Residential 4 that is running north-south. Same map as you just saw, but with Residential 4 outlined on the subject site. So some of the impacts on the site today, 1,102 dwelling units on the Wyomama Village Residential 2. If this were approved for Residential 4, it effectively doubles that. It also introduces the ability for commercial uses, since Residential 4 allows that with commercial locational criteria. Can't do commercial uses in Wyomama Village Residential 2, except for a couple of specific areas. Same agency comments that we've had with the USA expansion. Inconsistency review, it's consistent with a variety of different topics or different policies, including the urban service area for public facilities in the area to serve the development. Environmental considerations such as clustering in this area, community development, again, Residential 4 is directly to the west of the subject site. And it is also consistent with a variety of Wyomama Village Residential 2 policies. You've seen this a couple of times. This was something that the state provided us with each and every one of the USA expansion amendments that we had. A technical comment is not an objection. A technical comment is the Department of Commerce at the state talking to your staff and asking for additional information. We believe that is what this does in our response to the state. It is in your packet, so we wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to see that. And with that, the recommendation is for the Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan. Thank you for your time. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. The applicant come forward.
You know what? I'm just going to use my slides.
Got it. Got it.
Thanks. Commissioners, Happy New Year. Jake Kramer, 401 East Jackson Street, Sterns Weaver Miller. I'll keep this brief. I just have a couple of graphics to show. So this first graphic just shows in orange at the bottom, that's WVR2. The green just above that is RP2. So this property is nestled between those, adjacent to the urban service boundary. So you can see, this is really, this property is in the area that this board has directed already to bring into the urban service boundary. We just happen to be on the private sector, and we're moving a little bit more quickly than those public amendments. This is really the most important graphic of my presentation, so I'm just focusing on this. The green around the property on the north, south, and east, that is county preservation land. That's the Baum Scrub. The, I guess that'd be Hunter Green, the Thatch Green property here on the west side. That's a private mitigation bank. So what that means is they've recorded a conservation easement, and that property will remain in private conservation in perpetuity. So the point I make to you is that this is the best that it gets when it comes to buffering. This entire property, when it's developed, is going to be naturally buffered so that the neighbors don't have any impacts. When we had community meetings, we had some folks from Valencia that came. Their only request was, hey, we know development is coming, but we'd like this to be a nice, high-quality community that looks like ours. So we're requesting the exact same designation that that community has. Again, we're happy, we have not filed a PD, so we're happy to sit down with the folks here that have made comments in the public when we get to that stage. This is a farming family, the Astons. Some of you probably get your strawberries from them. They're not going anywhere. So they're happy to sit down. This property is going to be their legacy. So thank you. Hear for any questions if you have it. Our whole team is here.
All right. Thank you, sir. On this public hearing, anyone like to speak to CPA 2411 or 2410?
Once again, it's Augie Grace, Cobble Mill Drive, Wyomama. First of all, I want to comment on the comments of the commissioners. I appreciate Commissioner Cohen's mention of the investments that are being done in the area, and also Commissioner Wostel's efforts on mitigation and impact fees. I just want to show you a couple of videos real quickly to show you what is going on in Wyomama right now with construction. So this is the corner of Bishop Road and 579. And when I mentioned that there's a great deal of construction going on now, a great deal of new housing that's being constructed, this is an example of what we're seeing in Wyomama right now. So that's all site preparation that's being done. This is all developments that have already been approved. If you look at the right-hand side, you can see model homes that are being built so that once the model homes are being built, they can start the sale of homes in this area. Again, my point is, first of all, that the eighty-four hundred homes is going to be a great deal of impact on our community. But I also try to make the point that we need to look at what is already being built now. I don't have a lot of time, so I'll just show this one other video. So this is South Shore Bay of the Lagoon. If you look, you can see how many homes have already been built at South Shore Bay, how large of a development that is. The back entrance is on Bishop Road. If you look to the left, that's site preparation that's going on. That's more houses that are going to be built in that area. Now, this is going to empty out on Bishop Road. We already talked about three of the applicants being adjacent to Bishop Road. Bishop Road, as you're going to see here, is single-lane in each direction. It's going to go out to 301, the corner of Bishop Road and 301. Right now, there are two proposals for a charter middle school and a charter elementary school. Bishop Road is known as an area that has almost an accident every day because people are trying to take a left-hand turn across 301 to come down Bishop Road. I should also mention that this is done on New Year's Day, so if you look at it, you're not going to see a whole lot of traffic. But the intersection is going to have both of those schools and the traffic.
Thank you, sir.
...
Next speaker.
Okay. My name's John Regan. I live at 5051 Sandy Brook Circle, Wyomama. The West Lake Drive application is Aston Farms located on the northern end of West Lake Drive. Aston the property owner is stating they don't wish to develop this property or sell the property, but wish to rezone multiple different acreages into one zoning level. Every time I brief this property to Wyomama residents, they laugh at the possibility this property will not be developed once rezoning is approved. The value of the property under Res 4 will increase the property value to a higher price than this property is worth today with current zoning. The Wyomama CPAC has no objection to rezone their acreage to WVR2. Another alternative is to rezone to WVR4 by moving the community benefits into WVR4 and delay approval of this application until a comprehensive infrastructure study is completed with mitigation strategies, plans for implementation, along with the development. This includes, but not limited to transportation, free public school, flooding risk, et cetera. Once the 551-acre property is developed, it can have 2,205 new homes, 2,955 additional children, with the closest elementary school being Reddick Elementary, and no other elementary schools currently in the county's five-year plan. In addition, the development of this property can result in 4,410 additional cars that are added to already congested Wyomama roads. The Wyomama CPAC opposes going to Res 4 without WVR2 benefits. So far, I have not seen the B OCC concerned about addressing community benefits. I would I would think you would be concerned with your residents. Impact fees. I think it's great that you're going to designate them to the area that's being impacted, but currently, we're already congested, and those impact fees are going to come too late.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Commissioner Wostel?
Same comments to this applicant concerning impact fees going forward and designating them to that area.
All right. Now, can we have a motion for CPA 2411? So moved. Motion, Commissioner Bowles, do you have a second? Second, Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on CPA 2411.
Motion carried five to zero.
I'm going to have a motion for CPA 2410.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Wostel, please accord your vote, CPA 2410.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay. Last item?
Yes, sir. Our last item, item A9, will be presented by Mr. Tyreek Royal. Thank you.
Good evening, Tyreek Royal, Planning Commission staff. And today I'll be presenting HCCPA 24-29 at 6911 Gibsonton Drive. This request is privately initiated, small-scale map amendment with approximately 1.18 acres. The request is to change the future land use designation of the parcel from Res 6 to SMU 6. The location of the site is in the southwest portion of Undercover Hillsborough County. It's located on the urban service area and within the limits of the Gibsonton Community Plan. The site is located in the coastal high hazard area, FEMA floodplain zone AE. This is aerial photo of the site, outlined here in pink. It's located to the north of Nundy Avenue, south of Gibsonton Drive, and west of Gloria Street, and east of US Highway 41 South. The surrounding uses include heavy commercial to the west and single-family homes to the east and the north across Gibsonton Drive. Here's a shot facing east on Gibsonton Drive with the subject site being located to the right. Here, we're facing north of the site. The subject site is behind the camera. Here we are, facing south towards the subject site with the, to the right, a single home family being located there. This is facing west on Gibsonton Drive with the subject site being to the left. The site is in the Res 6 future land use designation, which allows for consideration of residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use development. Commercial uses are subject to locational criteria. Surrounding land use designations include residential 6. The applicant is requesting to change the future land use category from Res 6 to SMU 6. Typical uses within SMU 6 include residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, commercial, office uses, research corporate park uses, light industrial, multipurpose, clustered residential, and/or mixed-use projects. Neighborhood, commercial uses must meet locational criteria or be a part of a larger mixed-use plan development. Office uses are not subject to locational criteria. Currently, under Res 6 designation, the site can be considered for up to seven dwelling units and approximately 12,000 square feet or 0.25 FAR, whatever's less intense. The change to SMU 6 will allow for consideration up to seven dwelling units and approximately 25,000 square feet or 0.25 FAR, whatever's less intense. The proposed amendment will allow for the same residential density and greater commercial intensity. Planning Commission staff has reviewed the proposed application and found it to be consistent based on the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, specifically Policy 16.2, 16.3, and 16.5. With that, Planning Commission staff recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
Advocate come forward. Good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, Commissioners Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, Number 451 St. Petersburg. This is HCCPA 2429. The applicant is an individual businessman, Mr. Milo Mango. It's a small business trucking company with about four employees. Planning Commission Board voted unanimously in support, and we have neighbor's support. We're in the Gibsonton area. We're seeking SMU 6. This is the future land use map, which is important to note that just a couple doors down to the east, the Board of County Commissioners approved SMU 6. Under zoning, it is currently commercial general, so it's a more intensive zoning category already. There's a couple other properties immediately to the west, by coincidence, which were also coming through. They're not at this hearing, but they've been found consistent by the Planning Commission as well. Recent history, Board of County Commissioners found the site a couple doors down, proof 70 under CPA 15-09. Planning Commission at that time found that that site was consistent with uses in the immediate area, which would include the site similar compatible. And that continues to be the situation now. Along Gibsonton Drive on the south side, you'll see there's very intensive uses, industrial. This is one of my favorite pictures along Gibsonton at the near the immediate area. As you can see here, infrastructure construction, all types of more intensive land uses as you go along Gibsonton Drive, again, up to CPA 2430. Currently, Gibsonton is carrying 12,500 trips per day. It's an official arterial roadway and is designated by the Board of County Commissioners as their official truck route in the immediate area. as their official truck route in the immediate area. Under Gibsonson, the community plan notes that Gibsonson should continue to enhance the opportunities for small business and businesses along Gibsonson Drive, which this site meets. And truck routes designated, truck routes should continue. Under the Gibsonson plan, also notes to allow, again, the small business professional office support rather than obstruct those type of uses along Gibsonson Drive. And again, Mr. Milo is a small businessman with four employees. And report today, they note the category is within density and intensity range by the Planning Commission staff. A budding on the east is not residential. The budding east owner has a letter into the record. His use as well is very intensive, as you can see. And finally, we have four or five other neighbors who are located on the south side of Gibsonson, who are the most closely located neighbors, also in support. So with that, we appreciate your consideration and ask for your support this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. On this public hearing, anyone like to speak to this item?
Chairman, we do have one person, Mary Cackling, virtually.
Okay.
John Regan.
Go ahead, Mary.
Hold on. Please proceed, sir.
I live at 5051 Sandy Brook Circle, Wyoma. If the property located at 15540 Westlake Drive is rezoned to Res 4 and sold and/or developed, will have 551 acres with up to 2,205 new homes, 2,955 additional children with current overcrowded schools and no elementary schools currently.
Sir, hold on one moment.
Okay.
Would staff like to make a comment?
Just, I believe what you're testifying to is a different application than what the board is considering right now. They're considering HCCPA 2429 at 6911 Gibsonson Drive.
Okay. I got the wrong one. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience that want to speak to this item? Okay, I believe we have someone that's virtual.
Yes, Mary. Hello. Go ahead. This is, yes, Mary Cackling, 10401 Trinity Lane in Gibsonson. The company, Milo Trucking, at this location, is a reputable and responsible local business. This proposed change is compatible and similar in use to the properties in the immediate vicinity. As a resident in the immediate vicinity, I am in support of this change. And yesterday, I emailed to the board a joint letter that was signed by owners representing a total of six neighboring residences who are all in support of this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cackling. Appreciate your comments. I don't see anyone else that's signed up to speak. Can we have a motion on CPA 2429?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Wostol. Second Commissioner Cohen, please record your vote. CPA 2429.
Motion carried five to zero.
Okay. With that, we adjourn.